I am going to call the June 8th Village of Webster Board meeting to order. I would ask, invite everyone to join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own.
(Music)
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 What's your name? About half an hour, I think, at Bedway, so. What's your name?
I'm Kathy Dorner.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Well, welcome, and we thank you very much for coming this evening and allowing the Village of Webster Board of Trustees and the Village Mayor the opportunity to recognize all your efforts on behalf of our community. The community of Webster is very fortunate and blessed to have so many organizations and individuals, some represented here tonight, that regularly put others before themselves for the betterment of the community in which we live. You perform these charitable and selfless acts without seeking recognition, and many, many people benefit from your acts of kindness. Your efforts and the time away from your families are greatly appreciated and deserving of the proclamation that will be bestowed upon you this evening. At this time, I would ask that the Village of Webster Board of Trustees please rise with me as I read the proclamation. I have old eyes, so I had to have a bigger hand. Village of Webster Proclamation, whereas a great society is only as great as those individuals or organizations who perform exemplary services on behalf of their community, whether by raising money for charity or providing a service. And whereas it is the belief of the Village Board that such individuals and/or organizations should be recognized for the selfless acts performed for others. And whereas organizations in Webster, such as, but not limited to, American Legion Post Number 942, The Chorus of the Genesee, Damascus Shrine Temple, Elts Lodge Number 2396, Friends of the Webster Library, Friends of Webster Trails, Mr. Jerry Moldenhauer, Kiwanis Club of Webster, The Knights of Columbus, Northeast Quadrant Advanced Life Support, Penn Web Rotary Club, Relay for Life, Veterans of Foreign Wars Ridge Webster Post Number 9483, The Webster Association of Senior Program Supporters, The Webster Business Improvement District, Webster Central PTSA, Webster Chamber of Commerce, Webster Community Chest, Webster Economic Development Alliance, Webster Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary, Webster Health and Education Network for Drug-Free Community Coalition, The Webster Lions Club, Webster Masonic Lodge Number 538, Our Webster Police Department, Webster Rotary Interact and Key Clubs at Webster Schrader and Webster Thomas High Schools, The Webster Volunteer Fire Department, West Webster Fire Department, Widows Sons, and The Women's Club of Webster all provide services to support families in need or in times of crisis, while also building leadership and network of people united for a good cause. Whereas these individuals go out of their way to help others and seldom receive recognition for their charitable acts that benefit not only Webster, but greater Rochester area. Therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor John Cahill and the Village Board, on behalf of the Village of Webster, New York, on this, the 8th day of June 2017, do hereby recognize and applaud the good deeds of all these organizations and the individuals that support them and extend our heartfelt appreciation for their dedication to helping the Webster community. So what I'd like to do is I have a list someplace here, my list of attendees, here it is. I'd like to call those up that are represented this evening and present you with the proclamations. So I'd like to start with American Legion Post Number 942, represented by our Commander Next is the Elts Lodge Number 2396, William Denise Past President, representing.[431.12][431.12](Applause) Next we have The Knights of Columbus, represented by Tom Dole, Deputy Grand Knight.[451.12][451.12](Applause) Next we have the Northeast Quadrant Advanced Life Support, represented by Mr. Mike Pope, Next we have Relay for Life, represented by Robin Whitaker. And, sorry, the Penny Swingle couldn't be here to see anything, but she is, and her Next we have the Veterans of Foreign Wars Webster Post Number 9483, represented by Ralph Next we have the Webster Association of Senior Program Supporters, represented by Faith Julie Shalacy, thank you so much for all you do.[563.04][563.04](Applause) Next is the Webster Business Improvement District, represented by Robin Whittaker.[578.41][578.41](Applause)
Do you like to say something?
Next we have the Webster Community Chest, represented by Nancy Steele, Vice President.[600.66][600.66](Applause)
And I have Michael Grenier here also.
Michael, thank you.[614.04][614.04](Applause) Next we have the Webster Economic Development Alliance, represented by, again, Robin Whitaker.[627.29][627.29](Applause) Now, the third time, you have to say something, okay?
You just want to sit up here.
Yeah.
Sure.
We have the Webster Lions Club, represented by Gary Lozaro.[652.88][652.88](Applause) Next is the Webster Police Department, represented by Mr. Joe Rieger. I see you brought back up.
I did. Officer Angles came to support.
Next we have Webster Schrader Key Club, represented by Sarah Pekowska.[703.41][703.41](Laughter) Next we have the Webster Schrader Rotary Interact Club, represented by Caitlin Glastenberg.[725.54][725.54](Applause) Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next we have Webster Thomas Rotary Interact Club, represented by Kimberly Muth.[750.88][750.88](Applause) Next we have the Webster Volunteer Fire Department, represented by David LaRue, Vice President, Next we have The Widows Sons, represented by Andy Reynolds, sorry.[806.41][806.41](Applause)
I just want to take a second to thank Mayor John Cahill, the Village Board, the Webster Volunteer Fire Department, Police Department, without your help, our support, and it would have been a lot harder to do what we do, so thank you, and thanks to the community. It means a lot.
Is there anyone else here that has not been represented? Webster Chamber of Commerce, represented by my friend Barry Howard.[867.04][867.04](Applause) Rotary Club?
Aye.
Brian Wenzel.
Aye.
All right, and Rotary Club?
Brian Wenzel.
Where's Brian? Who's here for Webster Fire Department?
Thank you.
I mean, all my Rotarians to stand up.
Kiwanis Club?
Joe.
Joe. Joe. PTSA, represented this evening. All right, has everybody that's here been acknowledged? Is anybody from Webster Masonic Lodge here this evening? Okay.
Right here, one.
All right. Come on. Well, that concludes our proclamations, and, you know, in closing, I just, it's an honor to stand before you this evening, to give you the thanks that we've given, and I just, I really wish that there's more that we could do. You do sacrifice so much, especially the time away from your families, to do what you do, and, you know, this is just a small way of saying thank you to all of you and your organizations for what you all do for this community. You know, I realize that, you know, I haven't been living here that long, seven years now, but one of the first things I did learn when I moved to this community was the sense of community, okay? And, you know, the neighbors that reach out, and how close, and how this community comes together at times of tragedy. You know, I truly feel blessed to live in this community, so thank you very much, everyone. All right, so I'd like to take a 15-minute recess, if that's okay, just to have some chat and say thank you, all right? So we're in recess for the next 15 minutes. At any time, I will open up the public portion, Public Comments section of the meeting, so if there's anyone here that would like to address the board, please feel free to come up to the podium.
Richard Bullard, 20 Els Street. I'm here today to represent the National Justice Action League, and I'd just like to hand out to the board members and the clerk a copy of the letter that has been sent to the C in support of the Webster STP. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Anyone else this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, in that event, I will close the Public Comments section of the meeting. We're going to go out of order this evening. We do have a guest this evening that would like to address the board with respect to 10104 East Main Street, and his name is Mr. David Chase, who are an attorney.
Yes, sir.
Feel free, sir, thank you for coming in this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Barron, Mr. Swingle, Mrs. Malphi, thank you very much for having me here. I'm an attorney with fine such in Crane, and I represent the owners of 10104 Main Street. My client purchased the property out of a foreclosure sale, as you may or may not know. So, I know, it's my understanding that the village has had some frustration with the condition of the property, and I came to report what my client intends to do and what the process is going forward. But before I talk about where we're going forward, I want to talk about where we've been over the past few months. So my client took title to the property in, I think it was mid to late January of this year, after foreclosure was completed. My client was owed at the time just south of $400,000, so this is going to be a near complete loss for my client. At that time, my client normally puts properties from foreclosure into what's called REO, or Real Estate Owned Inventory. In other words, it's the inventory that the bank or the foreclosing lender ends up getting back into its inventory to try to liquidate and offset its losses. So it was looking for a buyer or an investor to be able to buy the property, presumably with the intention to rehabilitate it. However, there was one department of my client, another department of my client who deals more with code enforcement matters, I think realized that the property is not salvageable, that it would be cost propititive. So, much like the child being caught between two feuding parents, my client was stuck between two managers who both believed that they were right. Well, now, we've, I should say, I believe that that's caused some issues with communications with the village, and for that I apologize. So where we're going now is, my client does realize that the property is not salvageable, that something has to be done with the property sooner rather than later. My client has received a bid that they've approved to demolish the property, they've approved the bid. It's my understanding that they've had the utilities shut off as of yesterday to the property, so they are gene to remove the meter from the house, and they will begin demolition once they get the necessary permit to do so. I thought that the permit was going to be applied for by today, however, I believe, although I've not confirmed, that there was a slight delay in that the local contractor was doing an asbestos evaluation to make sure that the property is going to be demolished in a way that is in accordance with New York State law for both the workers removing the property and also for the safety of the community around. So that's where we are. I respectfully request that the board hold off on any further action on the property at this time. I believe my client is moving forward, we do have a clear vision of what we are going to be doing, and I've offered Mr. Barron, you know, my personal contact information, and I would like to be the point person of contact, or my supervisor Joanna, or my one legal assistant Corolla, so my office can be the primary source of contact, and of course, the local contractor will be in direct contact with the village to get the necessary permits to perform demolition.
On behalf of the Village Board, I express our appreciation for your coming in this evening.
Sure.
This has been a point of attention for this property for years, we've been working with it for, I don't know, at least a year if not more, and we are very much looking forward to the property being disposed of in the manner in which you're about to undertake. So, you know, we will not take any further action.
Thank you.
We will rely upon your word this evening. I did have conversation with your vendor, I actually met him by chance, just driving by the property one day.
Okay.
And at that time, he was just walking around the property, so he's being a nosy-nally that I am, I just pulled over and introduced myself, and asked what he was doing, I had a pretty good idea. So, you know, he gave me his business card, and I gave him mine, and he actually called me this morning, told me he had been awarded the bid, so, and I forwarded your email to the board members, and, you know, we thank you very much, and, you know, convey our appreciation to your client, and hopefully everything goes smoothly from here, which I envision that it will.
Well, hopefully now that my office is involved, we can help, Reese those wheels will continue to go smoothly, yes, so thank you very much for your time, your attention, and your consideration and patience. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Have a good evening, and thank you for taking the time out of your, your, your duty to come and address the board.
Sure, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
The only thing I would add is that with Mr. Case listening, we have a year with the county, where we submitted the notice of demolition to the original owner, and the year ends August 8.
Right.
So just, for your clients, just to make sure that something starts happening before then otherwise, we would be forced to demolish it ourselves. That's it.
Thank you, I'm noting it, so I'll advise my client.
No, I'm fairly certain that it'll be down long before that.
That's my expectation, yes.
Well, thanks for coming in this evening, well, this is your regularly scheduled evening, so.
That's okay.
Appreciate it.
You get a chance to see all the volunteer organizations, that was worth it right there. I'm giving them a ride, so.
Oh, so I've moved very long.
Oh, let's go, come on.[1597.12][1597.12](Laughter)
All right, next we have a resolution to approve the Minnesota Board Meeting on May 25th. Anybody have any questions, changes? No? Let's see, we spelled fire con again.
I did just block that.
Not again, are you serious? All right, I'll entertain a motion in a second to, to, to the Board Meeting of May 25th. I'm so glad that we, I'm so glad to have a sense of humor up here at times.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Anybody have any questions?
I went over them, I didn't have any questions, no.
Were there a couple that I missed? I was told that might be a couple extra, but I don't know, I'll come up.
No, I had no questions, I'm booked out.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion in a second to pay the bills.
I'll make it. Second.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, next is an authorization to pay $2,520.42 for non-residential electric service installation at the new cell tower site.
I'm sure.
All right, in that event, I will entertain a motion in a second to authorize the payment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Mayor Cahill?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Are you starting that again? Jake, comping overtime?
Yes. Actually, just the, let's see, the overtime here's three hours and one, because we're coming in watering the flowers, you know, they call in for the flowers there, so.
Our time guys don't work, or that guy, our time seasonal guy doesn't work on weekends?
Well, I'm sure they've got to go through everybody else first.
Yeah.
I'm going to go with Jake on this one.
Somebody who, who normally sits up there told me about that and I'm like, oh, whatever. Okay. By the way, the flowers look great. When are they going in the pots? Are they in? Did I miss them today? Because last time I saw the pots out here, they weren't in.
Yeah, that was Memorial Day weekend.
No, no, they went in on Sunday. They went in on Sunday.
Holy smokes, I have to work, stop working so many hours on my radio job.
Oh, they went in Sunday, looked really nice.
The hanging flowers are beautiful, but.
Yep, no, they're, they're, they're looking nice. We've, it's the one bit of a pretty rainy pool here. It'll dry out too fast.
That's a little overtime.
You might want to move one of the pots in front of, I'll talk to you about that later, about repositioning one of them to a certain area on the south side of West Main. That's it for, do you have anything for us, Joe Sutton or Office, that's it?
Just that it is tax season and I just want to remind everybody coming in and pay their tax bill before the end of the month.
I think Jake's had mine this year.
Come until July five without interest.
Till July what?
Five, the fifth of July.
We're over the extra day, right, for the, is that correct?
We are closed on the third and fourth.
No, we're extending when they can pay without penalty because of the holiday, right?
It is the law because we are closed.
I understand.
The first is.
The third of July is the last.
Yes. All right, Jake, we have an opportunity to be out here before eight thirty, which will be like a rocker if you can keep it short this evening. You know, it's difficult.
All right, Dunedin Avenue gutters are going in next week. We started brush a little bit late this week, but that's in progress. Try to remind everybody to, nothing with roots on it. I guess, I guess it'll go in the minutes, whoever goes at the minutes. Nothing with roots on it, this time of year, people are pulling stuff out. I mean, we will pass that up and I won't remind you. And then we'll probably be, you know, go back and get it after they've got the roots up and cut the shrubs in half so we can put them in the machine. But trickle-in filter, as we discussed trickle-in filter up at the S T P, there is a variable frequency drive on it that they no longer make parts for, for, and they decided not to work any longer. We've got it up and running as of today, this afternoon. We're down there, they, it basically hotwired to bypass the variable frequency drive. So, it's running when it runs, it's, it's running. The variable frequency drive, when it takes input from the, the influent, the meter, the channel saying what our flows are, it adjusts the rate of the, the motor accordingly, you know, to account for what the flows are. Usually runs, it's a lot more efficient when it runs and not at full speed. Right now, it's hotwired and it's running. And the V F D takes ten days to get in.
The what?
The V F D, that's a variable frequency drive.
Okay.
We did, it went down to the wells, we have about five of them down there, but they're all four hundred and eighty volts. This is a two hundred and thirty volt for a fifty horse motor. So, I was hoping, and they assured me that they just couldn't hook it up halfway. So, I tried, so I thought that would have been a nice, a nice alternative, but that will not work, so. And we've been notifying the communication with the town. Typically, John's been talking to Jay down there because Dave's, you know, Dave works part-time now. So, we've been talking around about it and I know that they were having some concerns with the suspended solids that were down there. So, we, you know, they said we've been talking to them the whole time, letting them know and giving them the updates and letting them know, say, that it was up and running, so. And then finally, the last thing.
Let me interject real quick. Do you have any cost protection?
Oh, yes. And you're all sitting down, sixteen thousand. That includes the hotwiring though. We had two technicians up here today getting the old one bypassed. They had, they had two other people that were here looking at it, giving them quotes for the V F Ds or trying to give them quotes for the V F Ds. And the, they could not hotwire it, they could not figure out. Cost associates had come out and sent people out and they had bypassed and working today. So, that's an imperative, part of it is we can't be without it for ten days. So, they got it running and going, so.
So, in that, in that room, that's like, it looks like a tall computer box, I mean. There's a couple others in there, one, one there or no?
No, on the.
Boxes that look like that or?
Yeah, there's, there's.
Are equally as old?
That one's, honestly, I think one of the newer boxes in that room.
Really? Because that one, John told me it was like twenty years old.
Yeah, that's, that's, that is the newer, newer one. When I first started here for the SCADA system that we had before.
They were using squirrels?
No, well, Jeff used to save the old computers.
Oh, that's right.
They were going to have to make sure to pull boards out and stuff in case we needed parts for them because they couldn't buy the parts anymore. I mean, the computer system still worked, but since we've since upgraded the SCADA system. But yeah, that's, it's the box with all those boards inside it looks relatively, you know, when you open it up, it's got the, you know, the green, whatever the, the circuit board is there with all the little electronic things on it. But there's a display or keypad on there and that's, I think, one of the, one of the items that's gone. It doesn't work and trying to make everything work together because that takes input from a flow meter that sends it either to there. I haven't figured it out yet, I got to talk to the other people that put it in. If it goes from there to the SCADA system and back out and then to the motors or what the room is, but. It's an important part. Finally, the streetlights. Might send everybody a thing on the streetlights.
Yep.
So, you only got two minutes to make a decision.
Talk faster.
Send everybody a thing on the streetlights that Andy Britton and Dave Fritzy sent out. I've, I've offered some suggestions on what I think Matt Chatfield and I'll talk about. He would like to see the three. Basically, it, it came down to, once they did the study, they went out and looked at Dunedin Avenue. Dunedin Avenue has long stretches, about a hundred and twenty-five, and then you said a hundred and fifty foot stretches in between where the lights are.
Yeah.
They have zero foot candles, is what they measure light in. I knew we wanted to be brighter than Dunedin Avenue, but not, we don't want airplanes trying to land there either. So, we went, he went out and looked at Dunedin and figured out where that was. And because of the mature trees and the type of lights there and where the lights are, that had a lot of areas with, with zero. So, he went down and planned out North Avenue. It happened to come out to thirty lights right now. And that was for, yeah, thirty lights. And the minimum, we said the minimum lights that they've got projected without accounting for any of the other ambient light around there or the other outside sources of light is two or point two foot candles. So, it would be dim, it's not going to be runway, but it'll be more light than Dunedin, more light than the side, yes, sir.
What's the color of the light?
We haven't got to that part yet. But there's a color temperature.
You've got like a violet color there and Greg's got a like LED, like blow your eyes out white over there.
No, we, I'm talking.
We talked about that.
Yeah, we talked about the color temperature. He was talking about a twenty-seven hundred or I think it was twenty-seven hundred, four thousand or five thousand fives out. Twenty-seven, I want to see, I think it might be, I think that's something that we've got. Twenty-seven's a little, I think that's a little too, too yellowish or orangish. I think it's a little too light.
What is Dunedin?
I don't know.
Because that, that, you know, because we all know what Dunedin.
Oh, no, Dunedin's are, are high pressure sodium. Those aren't LEDs at all.
No.
No, we're just looking at the type of light that was, or the, the amount of light, not the type. So, those are high pressure sodium and they're really orange, which I think are perfect in a residential setting. I mean, some people say that, you know, they wouldn't mind a little bit brighter. But here, you know, we're on your kind of the main drag through town. They want to make it a little brighter and, you know, more pedestrian scale.
They're taking those off, right?
Yeah, the Cobra heads are coming down. The last plan that he had, so that might, that might go back and forth by a couple. The one thing that's important, I think we got to get with Don, is if the board wants to go with the thirty, oh, I got thirty seconds. The board wants to go with the thirty or thirty-two, let's say they replace those other ones up. Near Smith's from the veterans part of this way.
Right.
That puts the total right now, eight hundred for construction, the estimate, the budget estimate, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred. There was originally planned eight hundred and twenty-nine. But what he did with that is he has a fifty thousand dollar contingency in there. He also has the median removed at thirty-eight thousand and the.
Orchard Street.
Orchard Street gateway removed at twenty-seven.
That's high.
Those are add alternates.
Yep.
I talked to the guy from the state today to, because this is wacky when the way the federal government and the states do things. If we approve, or if the, we, if the board approves a construction by, let's say, of worst case scenario, everything that's in there, including all the alternates, that comes in at nine hundred and eighteen thousand. If the base bid items, without the contingency, if those base bid items come out to be nine hundred and ten thousand, congratulations, you got yourself the minimum project for the maximum cost. The better way to go about doing that is to put everything in and do as a, a deduct alter that. So, you can actually take things, you take things back outs. And then if everything comes in nine hundred and thirty, so you know, we're taking the gateway off is the first thing you're deducting or the median would be the second thing you're deducting. You get the cost down where you had, where you'd like to have them. The things we're going to have to do is if the, other than cutting something else out or reducing, we're reducing the, the contingency by fifteen or twenty thousand, which leaves you less options on, you know, as you go through field changes. The, we'd have to change the bond resolution. Not that we're changing any different amount of bond, but in the bond resolution stated the approximate, which I don't understand, it's approximate or estimated cost or approximate maximum cost. Estimated maximum cost, excuse me, which obviously is an estimated maximum cost, it's not perfect. If that changes, you have to change the bond resolution. It's a period of probable use is less than five years, there's no permissive referendum from what I understand on it. And there's no more estoppel notice because you're not changing the amount of bond. The amount of bond money that would be bonded is still the same eight hundred and fifty. It's just saying that the maximum cost might go up if you're going to finance it otherwise. And we talked about portion of it being from parts and records that's able to be used and we're able to transfer that stuff over, so.
So, you have to change the bond resolution, changing the overall cost of the project, which is going up based upon what we had originally estimated?
Yeah, there's one.
How much is it over?
The original budget estimate was one million fifty-four thousand dollars.
Right.
For the total project cost.
Total project, right.
If everything is in there now with the gateway and the median, if we want to leave those as options, then the total cost, the total maximum cost would be one million one hundred and forty-three thousand one hundred.
So, we went from being a hundred and twenty thousand over to a hundred and forty thousand over, is what you're telling me?
No.
No?
No, ninety.
Ninety?
Yeah, so from fifty-four to one forty-three, basically.
If we were a hundred and twenty thousand over.
Eighty-nine thousand one hundred, actually.
Well, meeting I was in, they said a hundred and twenty.
Oh, no, we were originally one twenty.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You're one twenty, but they cut the lights, made a more realistic contingency budget. They didn't take the entire deduction from.
Well, now we're eighty-four thousand over, you're saying?
Eighty-nine thousand one hundred.
And that's with everything?
That's, that's with everything.
That's with everything, right?
That's with everything.
Okay.
That's if everything's set. And we don't know where the budget, where the bids are going to come in. There's different, there's different schools of thought on that too. I want to see where some of the other ones that are coming in. I want to get it done this year, but there might be a big financial benefit to bidding it this year and completing it in the spring, in summer.
We had that discussion because most of the projects that are going to be done this summer have already been bid and accepted. So, some of these guys are going to look at that like, yeah, I don't really need it, so I'm going to bid the living bejipers out of it and that's going to hurt the taxpayers.
And this is going to be a September, October, November thing, which is going to hurt everything depending on what the weather does. So, it might be something to consider. As much as I want to get it done, I, I don't think one year is worth.
Yeah, I agree.
So, we can, so let me ask you this question, Jake. If they send it out to bid like in July, all right, June or July, and the bids come in astronomically high, we don't have to accept them, we can send it out again next year?
If the bids come in higher than the.
Overall cost.
Maximum allowable or maximum, because at the bid opening, you have to announce what you're, what you have available for constru-, what your construction budget is.
Okay.
And if, with everything in that, construction portion of that budget would be nine eighteen, nine eighteen one. But you have to announce, it's kind of like saying, hey, I want to buy a car. I've got, you know, got fifty-seven thousand and going to the dealer and they, sure, they'd show you a nice Ford Fiesta that would fit right in nicely into that budget, you know, it's just, it's a back. They're fifty-six, nine fifty.
Right.
But it's a backwards way to do it, but there, I'm sure some reason, somehow there's a reason for it, but.
Well, I mean, you can just speculate as to what the reason of it. It's not beneficial to the taxpayers.
I'm sure there's strings attached to getting eight hundred and fifty grand, you know, so.
Oh, yeah.
Which, they're pretty thin strings sometimes.
Well, that was my question. You know, if the overall bids come in, you know, higher than the projected cost of the project, then the board can send it back out again.
I, I'm not sure if you, once you stated if they come in under, I don't think you can, if anything comes in under. And that's a challenge too, because I think if we. If we bid it in September, or, or, excuse me, we bid it and then it's going to be a September, October, November.
Construction?
If somebody's available now to do, you know, it's not a humongous job for a lot of the construction companies. But if they're available and they're going to do it in that time period and not be finishing up other jobs that they have, there might be a reason why they're available.
Exactly.
So.
Very careful with that.
So, you know, it's, it's, there's, there's pluses and minuses, but I don't know what direction. If everybody likes those lights, if you're thinking that, you know, there, that other number is more palatable. But I'd have to get Don going on it, but the most important thing is get the engineers to finish those plans so they can get them into the state to get them reviewed. And once they're reviewed, once they get the, the permission or the authorization to go to construction, then we're going to have to do another resolution or modification of the, you know, when we added, we had design and right-of-way acquisition on there or right-of-way incidentals on there. We're going to have to go to the construction and the final design phase and all that. Remember, we'll authorize a portion of it. We're going to have to finish those guys up too. But I've got to get them to be able to finish the plans so they can submit them to the state.
So, are those, the layouts that you did before with the, the pink spray paint? And don't ask me why you picked pink, but whatever.
It's very visible. You know, it's good on my boots.
That's the layout right now, right?
No, no, the layout that I did before was forty-six lights.
Now there's.
Now there's thirty.
I'm finding that.
And there may be, you know, with the adjustment, we, you know, there's three that are basically from the veterans part of this way. There's one in Smith's that I think we can get rid of, one over near the bridal shop that I think we need to change. And the one that's on near the four corners in Smith, I thought we could change that when we change Main Street. I know Matt Chatfield's looking and saying, you know, his preference, and I don't blame him, would be to change that when we change the other ones. So, you know, it might.
So, you went from forty-six to thirty.
Yeah. Might have a couple, maybe if we tell them, may put them back, but reduce contingency down a little bit. Just trying to keep it around the same numbers.
Well, they're, they're still going to run, well, let me ask you this question from a construction standpoint because I know we went through forty-six to thirty. Are they still going to have the availability if you wanted to, if the board wanted to add lights down the road in those areas?
Or wiring's in there.
The wiring's in there.
Well, the wiring's there and the conduit's there, but they're, you know, the conduit's going to be pulled, there's not going to be junction boxes there and they're not pre-planning any of the poles for additional lights because they've got the spacing about a hundred and fifty foot apart, so it's balanced throughout. And one of the things, we, we went back and forth and I talked to, to Dave Fritzy about it is, so which time at night, looking at lights and looking at how everything is? Hardly anybody sees them at night when the lights, you know, in the winter time, obviously, you do, but very rarely. Most of the time, these are sticks in the ground that you're going to see during the day. That's when they're going to have the majority of the impact. And when it gets too busy, there's a lot of vertical thing, you know, there's signs, there's telephone poles. And I'm certainly not a designer or any kind of architect or I can, I'm lucky to be able to dress myself, so. But there's.
That's not getting carried away.
You definitely have a, you, you definitely have a, a job in technical writing. So, choose, believe it.
The, but there's a lot of vertical, from what they're telling me, a lot of vertical things there. The telephone poles, the trees, the signs, and they wanted to reduce, you know, not add to that. So, they're trying to balance what we need for light with what we need visually during the day when they're going to be seeing the majority of the time, so.
Yeah, it's just too bad you couldn't get a rear valve wired, those telephone poles, because they've just got offload.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. All right, well, thanks for doing all that work, Jake, I appreciate it.
All right, so everybody.
I responded to your email, by the way.
Does everyone, does the board vote that we go ahead and tell them to put in a thirty or maybe the thirty-two lights? Get it to the state?
June, June to June though, for some reason, I don't know.
All favor? And I'd like the record to reflect that I was done speaking at eight twenty-nine, but they asked me a lot of questions.
I'd like the record to reflect that he went ah, nah, nah. Anybody have anything else this evening?
Oh.
All right, that, the contract.
I responded to the email, I believe successfully but I, the new iPhone, I'm acting wacky. So, I will try to follow up again tomorrow because the notification I got that it was the sign of the agreement was signed, it was after the village board, the village signed it.
They signed it.
They signed it and they, they, they sent me an email saying, hey, once it's signed, let me know and I'm, it's already signed so.
I think Darryl had a pretty good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What does that mean? Camera details.
I, I think, I.
I think Jennifer's responding against that.